All right. Oh, should I give him his? Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Okay, so we're going to call the meeting of the Southern Lee High School Board tonight, January 9th, together, and we will start with the recording of attendance. And just to note, I understand Jeff Demig is on his way, but he's not present, so we may need to adjust once he arrives, if he does.
So Mrs. Reinhart is joining us by phone.
Jeffrey Demig. Kyle Gangwer.
Here.
Emily Dean.
Here.
Nicole King. William Lysat.
Present.
Steven Vaughn.
Present.
Mary Jo Reinhart. Mike Bell. Priya Serene.
Here.
Christopher Waya.
Present.
Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge.
Superior Act of the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, in its own justice.
And next will be visitor comments. Do we have any individuals registered?
No visitor comments.
Okay, so no visitor comments. Superintendent updates. See Mike already moving to the podium?
Yeah. Presentation tonight, thank you, Ms. Tulset. The... Some of you might recall, we were doing our strategic plan, and we were doing it in a hurry. We had to get it all in. And we said that our goal was to get something done to make sure that it was street legal, because we were on such a fly. But the point is, while we were on the fly for the strategic plan, we very much drive our work and our effort through strategic objectives. And Board members might recall that back in August, we had a presentation on strategic objectives for this year. The slide is linked, and those strategic objectives were based upon some basic strategic objectives from the prior year. And recognizing that we're up against the Bulldogs and the Horn Frogs tonight, we won't go through those strategic objectives, they're there if anyone wants to take a look at them. But there's some good news to report. There really is some good news to report. And I want to highlight that this good news is truly a result of the collective actions of our students, of our staff, of our board, and our community. And I have found, and I know this to be true, that Southern Lee High School District is full of talented people who are devoted to our mission. January marks School Board Appreciation Month, and so I want to take the occasion to thank our school board for your hours of effort and devotion and dedication to our students and to the district's mission. We have supremely talented group of administrators who are here tonight. We have professional staff who are represented certainly here tonight, who are driving us forward. And of course, we have the most talented students and the most supportive community in Lehigh Valley, and we're all blessed with that. And so tonight, this presentation is a mid-year report on progress and the first formal step in creating the 2324 budget, as we again look at the strategic objectives and where we stand with them. And I want to begin by taking a slide that we have seen before, and this slide was presented back in August, a year and a half ago. And this was part of that August meeting where we were trying to prioritize what it is we were doing and where we were going. And this slide told a challenging picture in that, over a course of a period of time, revenues were, for a number of different reasons, not meeting expenses and fund balances, were declining. Now, as we look forward to where we stand today, we just finished and are about to close the books on 2122 fiscal year, 2122. And you can see that these blue lines represent the difference between revenue and expense. And you could see that while for some time revenues were falling below expenses, in 2021, in 2020, 2021, we exceeded expenses. That was a difficult year, because it was swirling with pandemic funds and back and forth. But we came through, and in our last audit year, we experienced a surplus, which is really great, and I think caused for all of us to celebrate. Now, there's a lot of work still to be done, but it's good news. And so, the Southern Lee High School District had a real budgetary surplus in fiscal year 2122 of $2.2 million. And that's after a number of years where things were kind of challenging. And so, that's positive. But people say, and I would say that this surplus, in many respects, is a product of the strategic objectives that all of us have been working on. So, I thought that maybe we would take a look at the influencing factors that went into that result. And as we look at those influencing factors, we'll be able to talk about strategic objectives as we have been trying to identify them. So, the first set of influencing factors would be fiscal. And with thanks to Mr. Pepe for this slide, you can see that in 2021, we budgeted a deficit, all right? We budgeted $71 million in expenditures and $69 million in revenues. But we're pleased to say that the outcome was that our revenues, in fact, exceeded our expenditures in the amount of over $2.2 million. And if you look at the breakout, you'll see that in all of those important indicators, in current real estate, earned income, realty transfer taxes, delinquent taxes, we had a good year, right? So, collections were good. They exceeded budgeted numbers, and that was a very significant contributor. However, there were other contributors with respect to expense that we'd like to talk about. And in school districts, as all of us know, about 80% of what we spend is for the great people, all right, who do the work of teaching our children and cleaning our buildings and supporting the work of the school district. So, I think it's important for us to look at some of the changes and adjustments that took place in staffing. Before we do, just a couple thoughts, right? Is that all staffing adjustments that we'll talk about were made through attrition and realignment, all right? There have been no furloughs, no demotions, and that's important. And that's something that we certainly hope to be able to maintain, expect to maintain. Staff changes have resulted in a net reduction of positions. So, we are down positions from when we started. However, it has not simply been a matter of eliminate, eliminate, eliminate. While we're down a net number of positions, we have strategically added positions along the way in a manner that we think builds efficiency and increases the service to our students and to our community. And as we look at these, as we detail them coming up, the dollar values reported are total compensation. So, when you look at a number, wow, that seems like a lot of money. Well, it includes the salary, the benefits, the pension, all that kind of thing. So, that's as we look at these numbers going forward. So, at the district level, in the Assistant Superintendent's Office, we didn't fill a secretary vacancy. Same is true with the restructuring in the business office. And in curriculum and instruction, we did not fill another secretarial vacancy, true also for our special ed and student services. We did a major restructuring of our technology department, including the consolidation of two major administration positions into one. And we restructured custodial maintenance by not filling several vacant positions there. And then you can see the sum total of savings. At the building level, we did not fill a social studies position and a secretary position. At the middle school, again, a social studies position, a special ed teacher and a secretary. At the intermediate school, we did not fill another secretarial position. Again, all these are based on attrition. No one lost a job along the way, but as a vacancy occurred, the position was not filled. And at the elementary school, we actually added a teacher for the purpose of class size reduction. And so, if you look at all of the reductions in staffing that we have accomplished over the past number of months, it comes to a total of $1.3 million. And also, and we've talked about this before, we've made a pretty major shift in saying that in nearly all cases, and certainly all cases, while we can say it won't, it's possible that it won't happen, but in nearly all cases, we are now hiring teachers, that's step one, rather than giving credit for prior experience. This approach saved additional $45,000 this year compared to where the incoming staff would otherwise have been. As with all of these, there are trade-offs, all right? No one is saying any of this is free or any of this is without its concerns, right? But this is the approach, this is the approach that we have taken. And as I mentioned, we've just not cut, we've added. And so, on this sheet, I want to note that while there was a vacancy and the position was there, we didn't create the position, we filled the position of a Coordinator of PIMS and Data for $78,000. This next position, Coordinator of Administrative and Student Services, we thought we were going to fill. But the candidate that we had thought was going to join us actually did not accept the position. And I'll get back to this, this is a source of concern, because currently, we are without clerical support for the Assistant Superintendent, Director of Special Education, and the Director of Curriculum. And our thought was to consolidate and bring in someone, and we have been working for months to try to get a person in this job with a certain skill set that we think is what we need, and we've been unsuccessful. So, this is something that we have to kind of rethink about, because we'll talk later about one of the expectations we have, not only is it saving money and consolidating, we have some revenue generation ideas for this position that is being put off. So, it's a problem, but we'll get back to it. We did bring in Jim, Assistant Director of Technology. And again, we mentioned before, we hired an elementary teacher, and that is a net addition cost of $346,000. So, when you look at our work in staffing, all told, we were able to reduce expenses by about a million dollars. I'll pause there. Any questions? We certainly have questions in the end, too, but... The last influencing factor, we looked at fiscal and staffing, we're now up to operations. And so, I just grabbed some snapshots. This is not totally inclusive, there's lots more that have been going on, to give you a sampling of some of the things that we've been doing. The board is well aware that we transferred from Board Docs over to Google Docs, right, for savings of $9,000. Not without some trade-off, but I think worked pretty well. We used to have a weather service where we paid $6,000 a year to get updates on weather, and so we decided not to go with that. Dr. Trinkle, in cooperation with staff, did a very extensive, very interactive process in trying to apply technology programs that maybe we could be without, all right? And so, we end up saving $126,000 on that effort. And we've also made a concerted effort to try to do things ourselves instead of subcontracting. And so, just by way of example, it's a small thing, but I think it's telling. We used to do subcontracting to spread mulch. And we have a very talented staff, Mr. Rohrbach, Mr. Pepe, and so we'll spread our own mulch now, we'll buy it, and that was a savings of $10,000. And with our technology department now, we believe that we could handle network maintenance on our own, and we're canceling a contract with the intermediate unit, that's a $30,000 savings. That again comes back into our operation. And in addition to looking to cut costs, we're looking to increase revenue. Medical access is a process that we could undertake to get federal grant money for the medical services we provided by our social workers, by our school psychologists. And this has been an untapped source of revenue, and we kind of thought that this new position that we spoke about before in the business office would be a perfect one. It's a challenging task to track all this stuff and to make sure you can get the money. And our thought that having this up and running and accessing this revenue stream would be well underway by now has been kind of stymied a bit by our inability to get someone for that position. But again, we'll get back to you, talk about how you may have to increase the salary or rethink the position itself.
Wait.
Yes?
What is the medical access revenue? Where is that coming from?
Well, the federal government allows and actually pay, you know, like if you have medical access card, you're able to get some of your medical bills paid for. Well, we provide as a school district all kinds of services that are eligible for reimbursement. For example, if you're interacting with a licensed social worker, right? Or if a school psychologist is working with an individual, those are what's called billable hours. And so, we could submit for the work being done by our staff and submit a bill to medical access and then be reimbursed for those services. And yes.
So, in order to use those services, would families need to have medical coverage? Or?
A lot of it falls under Medicaid. Social education Medicaid initiative, semi-freight.
Okay, so would there be people that couldn't have access to those people based on insurance or?
Oh, no, no. We, first of all, we would never, ever ration services based on anyone's ability to pay. We would just continue to do exactly what it is we're doing for all the kids that we're doing it for, but recognizing that those services actually are of value to us, that we have been providing anyway and that we would provide anyway. It's just that we really have not been billing for some of those services that we could be billing for. So, it's, so with, the only addition is the coordination and the work and the organization to organize the process. But once that's done, which is we hope to do in the central office, it's a brand-new revenue stream for us that could be pretty substantial. I'm thinking six figures, right? And maybe comfortably into the six figures, we just have to kind of see how it pans out.
Can I just ask a follow-up question to that?
Yes.
So, um... So, I'm assuming, just to be clear, these are individuals, we're billing for services for individuals that are SLSD employees, right? These are not any of the, or are they medical personnel that we subcontract through, like LBHN or St. Luke's?
Oh, right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, these are our own hired, yes, that's what I was saying.
Because I just wanted to make sure, because obviously if you use a third party, then there might be double billing.
No, no. Only our, like for instance, our school psychologist, our licensed social workers, our nurses, all the people, correct?
And there would be no billing that would be passed along to families that are receiving services?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want, for those who may have a question.
Very important, yes. This is all good, right? There is no hitch, no bill, anything, and it's seamless for the students, they won't even know that this is happening.
So, how many years has this particular program been in effect at the government level? You know?
As long as I can remember, as long as I can remember.
Right. Thanks.
And to be clear, when you said, sorry, Mike, it's Emily's talking here. Um, I liked what you said about it'll be seamless, the students and their, the students won't even know, the students and their families, so there will be no additional, there will be no coordination with families and students, medical benefits that has to take place. This is just a school interaction with the, because folks out there might be listening and thinking, okay, what paperwork do I have to fill out as of next year? Is this the school interacts with?
No, yeah, no one is going to be asked to, you know, now, Dr. Trinkle no better. Sometimes if someone has an MA card, it might be helpful if they are able to provide some of that information. It's not, we're not contingent, you know, using it as a contingent to provide services.
No, no, not as a contingent.
So, there may be some, you know, small bits of information that would be helpful to us in processing these, but it's not, it's not as if, you know, if our daughter gets injured and we got to send her into the emergency room, and there's these claims and stuff comes in the mail to the family, that's not the case.
Right. And is there any, because I'm not familiar with what kind of service you're talking about?
Right.
So, I appreciate the update without the detail, I get that. Is there a possibility, will there be the need to communicate with families and students about, for instance, a program we have here that people are familiar with, is at the high school, we have folks from LBHN or St. Luke's as counselors in our buildings, and it's a great convenience, because parents can schedule appointments with those professionals in our buildings during school day, and you don't have the additional, it's a service to the community, and it can be billed medically. However, part of getting familiar with that system also involved, that those families cannot also then take advantage of counseling services outside the school. It's one or the other, because that is their medical plan. Is there a similar concern for, we have to be wary that we communicate well, that double dipping aspect? Like, if you're using a student's access to medical care for a psychologist or something, then the family couldn't seek an external evaluation that would also be covered? There's no doubling up, this is strictly a professional in school, kind of a?
Yeah, we provide a service for which we bill, and there is no impairment for the student to get additional service, because they have an arrangement after school with some outside group.
Right, right. They could continue to have that. And this, none of these services we're talking about would apply to that. You can't go to the dentist four times a year, you can only go twice. That kind of a thing is what I'm concerned with.
None at all.
So, there's no relationship essentially to insurance, like deductibles or anything like that, right? Because it's purely through a federal program that grants the money that you're just, got it, okay?
This is, this is all good. There really is no downside to it.
Dr. Mahone, have we, have we ever, has SLSD ever billed for those services, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge. They may have at some point, but in the recent past, there's no record of that.
And is, do most districts utilize this program?
I can't, I don't know, but most, it's commonly accessed by school districts, yes.
In the past, I do know Southern Lee High students use services that are accessed through the IU, and the IU has used those. So, perhaps our district has outsourced and coordinated with the IU that has then used those, the Medicaid and the Medicaid to pay for those services. So, in that way, it's definitely been used in the past by students, just anecdotally, absolutely, coordinated through the IU.
Well, I think the IU probably would be billing.
100%, yes, yes.
They're probably...
And serving Southern Lee High students through the IU, so, yeah.
So, again, just another, not, it's not just about cutting costs, but increasing revenue was another, another thing, right? And then also under operations, as far as understanding the, you know, the end year results, I want to say that, yes, we have realigned and reprioritized district initiatives. But I've heard this from, I think, almost every board member in one way or another, right? But even if we've said not now, we have said not now, to be honest, right? We have said not now, but not now does not mean not ever, right? And as we build upon successes, all right, and as we forge ahead together, right, we can realign our aspirations and aim higher. And I believe that. I believe that, okay? So, but for now, right, we really have been responding to emergent issues. We have a stadium upgrade, addressing an aging track, bleachers, and field surface. We have the exterior wall project at the intermediate school. We had a water break, if you remember, in one of the labs, it was actually pretty bad. And we've also worked very hard, and I say we, Mr. Pepe and his department have worked very hard in developing a major maintenance schedule for our high priority issues, and we've incorporated an architect of record to assist us in making sure we get on a schedule and we move with that schedule, to make sure that we are good stewards of the taxpayers' facilities. And we've also developed a number of financial strategies to leverage both fund balance and rapidly changing market conditions to maximize taxpayer value, right? Remember, we talked about the loan and the rates are going up and here and there, and what we should be doing with our fund balance and what we, you know, ought not to be doing with our fund balance? So, I think we developed a good strategy there. And then I also want to say that we've been doing much the same in technology, all right? Just as we are now looking to access medical access revenue, we are in the middle of the process now of accessing E-Rate grants. And E-Rate grants will help to underwrite all of the infrastructure upgrades that we are undertaking. Mr. Sum, I think already has engaged some assistance in this, in this process, and so we'll be increasing our revenue stream there. We've developed some short-term solutions that actually avoided a systemic failure of our wireless internet infrastructure at the start of the year. We have midterm and long-term plans that will be presented in early 2023 to address infrastructure deficiencies. These initiatives will be funded through capital reserves and e-grant initiatives. And we also are about to engage in an analysis of technology deployment, and related recommendations will be completed in the spring of this year, which we'll be bringing to the board and sharing with you. And I want to say, while it's hard to pin a number on these operational things in both facilities and technology, I can tell you for sure that these initiatives, while costly, will produce significant long-term savings and value to our students and taxpayers and community, right? So, even though while we're spending money, we're avoiding some really big costs, both in financial terms and in terms of our operation, in support of these efforts, I want to particularly note, not only the full board, but the Facility Committee has been working very long and very hard on these very important issues. And then finally, for budget allocation and fund balance utilization, we have very much tried, I could give chapter and verse, but I can just tell you, maybe you could just believe, we are very focused on budget allocations driven by strategic objectives, all right? If your spending is not part of our major focus, you're not spending, right? We've had a lot of no's coming here, a lot of yeses for things that we've been trying to accomplish, but a lot of no's for things that are kind of outside that framework. And as far as fund balance utilization, our fund balance is utilized for clearly defined and non-recurring expenses. A sizable fund balance that has been left to us, and it's a gift from the past, right? That people have, that this district has built up over time, right? We have a sizable fund balance, and we're leveraging it to reduce long-term borrowing costs, to increase instructional resources, and to mitigate, eliminate tax increases. So, this is, again, a part of a strategy that we're using, and again, part of the strategic objectives that we spoke about. Also, with respect to operations, and I'll run through this quickly, we're doing a comprehensive review of policy and administrative regulation, which Mr. Pigeon will be talking about tonight. We continue to make progress on the Levin Report, which is linked there, and some of the updates that we've done are listed there. And we've made some significant progress in enhancing internal controls. We've had a curtailment of credit card purchases. I think we have one credit card that's locked up now, that you need a secret code to get, I think, Mr. Pepe. We've expanded our utilization of bids and quotes, where in the past, maybe we just picked up a phone, now we're getting three quotes, or we're actually going out to bids. We've had significant curtailments in overtime. We've expanded the utilization of current technology applications, so we're doing a little better tracking things. And we have really, I think, adopted together a culture of value for students, staff, and community. We do, however, have much more work to do. So, what are the implications of all this, right? What does this mean for us, right? Well, I'm just repeating what I said before, the collective actions of students, staff, the board, and community have produced positive results. We're full of talented people here who are devoted to the district's mission. As we plan our 2324 budget, we will continue to prioritize instructional initiatives, and I'm confident that we're going to be able this year to avoid any tax increases for the community. And while the news is good, we should not forget or overlook the fact that we still remain in precarious fiscal circumstances, and we're going to be talking a lot about that in the upcoming budget presentations, and we will be required to make difficult decisions and have continued vigilance as we continue this ongoing success. And then by way of transition now, while we talk a lot about money and how much we save and what the graph looks like, right, it means nothing. It means nothing unless we could channel our scarce resources to enhance student outcomes and student achievements. That's what and why we're doing what we do, okay? We're not a bank, we're not trying to get, increase our dividends or buy back our shares, we're trying to increase and improve student outcomes and opportunities. And a central administrative goal is the development of a state-leading, for now, all right, hopefully nation-leading soon, K-3 language arts program focused on teaching all of our students to be, this is again a multi-year initiative. We now find ourselves at a critical point in this effort, and so following any questions we have on this presentation, Dr. Trinkle is going to provide an update on this, the most important work that we are doing, which is to get ancient kids to... So, with that, that concludes my report, and I'm very happy to entertain any questions, and Dr. Trinkle will be up next to talk about where we stand in our literacy initiative. And Dr. Trinkle will be up next to talk about where we stand in our literacy initiative.
First of all, I just want to commend everybody involved in this. There's a lot of work going on here that people don't see. And from the fiscal to the curriculum development and changing paths, changing direction, everything from kindergarten on up and everything from budgets on down. And I can't tell you how impressed I am in such a short period that we as a team have been able to really get into the nuts and bolts of getting things the way they need to be to move forward. So congratulations on what you've done. Now, the second question I have is, given that there's more work to do beyond these tasks, and as we move on into the next year, when can we expect to have some sort of a plan on some of these other, some may be low-hanging fruit, others are going to be tougher to get, chances to continue, continually improve? Do you have any target on that, that we could maybe talk about some of those goals? It's not going to be right away, obviously, but, you know, to continue the, the success.
Well, part of our strategic goals, our strategic objectives are multi-year. And so, for example, our literacy program began in earnest, and actually, we were implement, we planned last year, we implemented and planned, next year we'll be implementing, implementing and planning again. So we recognize that these are ongoing cycles. Our, our operations process with respect to our facilities and respect to our internal controls and our budgeting is ongoing. I will tell you right now, not to speak for Mr. Pepe, but I think I'm accurate in saying that both of us go into this budget season much less anxious than we did last year because we, we kind of have a sense of how it worked once year, one, one year. And so we will continue to do those improvements. So, Mr. Mahon, I don't know if I'm answering your question, if you had a specific initiative that you were suggesting that I address?
No, that's good.
Okay? But, but like, our work does not stop. And this is, it's exciting. And so we will continue to put forth strategic objectives, we'll continue to ask the board to hold us accountable to them, we'll continue to report out. I will tell you that tonight happens to be a lot of good news. I will be here not too long from now, probably giving you bad news, like, hey, we flopped on this, and we'll say as much, right? But not tonight, for now.
My point was, the key phrase of continuous improvement.
Right, yeah, that's it.
Any additional questions or comments? If not, we move on to Dr. Trinkle.
I just had one quick question about a follow-up. Thank you for the presentation on the progress and the sustained improvement. One of the items that, and obviously there are many strategic goals that could be tackled. One of the ones that had been brought up previously, going back maybe a year or more at this point, as a potential other revenue stream for the district, was to examine and focus on our food services. I know certain districts have, I believe some of the districts from where our administrators hail, who are now with us, had food service programs that provided an additional revenue stream. What's great about that is it doesn't take away in any way from any education, you know, the budget cuts and everything else, it's just, is there any goal going forward we'd talked about in the past? Is there any, I'd like to see us focus and potentially, if we're talking about revenue streams, look at that as a possibility going forward? Is there any plan to do so, to look at food services as a revenue stream?
There, there certainly is. First, I'm very pleased to report that you'll see in the audit report that for the first time in a while, we finished with the surplus in our cafeteria account this last year. That said, it is very fair to say that we have work to do in that. It has not risen to the top of our list, but it is most definitely on our list of, of things to look at from a structural point of view. But at least over the short term, in spite of those that need to, to do some work on it, we did not run a deficit, we did not draw from the general fund to underwrite our cafeteria in 2021, 2022.
Right. And beyond, beyond just the having its fund itself, I was talking about bringing in additional funds to the district beyond that. But are you saying that currently the progress that we've made is to have, which was one of the goals in the past, is to have it run so that it is a self-sustaining? Or is it just it didn't go beyond, it didn't run a deficit, it was, it was a zero sum?
It, it, this last year-
Yeah.
It was self-sustaining.
Okay.
No taxpayer dollars from the general fund, and, and that is the bare minimum.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And yes, yes, that's, that's not, that's not the goal. We're to see that, okay.
But that, I mean, when that doesn't happen, that's just the, like, five alarms. And so we did it okay this last year, but it's something that we do need to look at. And all of us are very much aware of that, that we have to be sure that we're not hitting the barest of minimum standards with the cafeteria. And, and we also want to make sure that we're providing great lunches and great food to our students.
I have, yeah.
I think there's probably areas where we can, we can do better there, too.
I've been on many-
In spite of the hard work that's going on from our dedicated people who are working in those-
Oh, absolutely. And they need to be involved with that solution. But I, I know it's a, lots of community folks have been asking about that as well, and it's an action item. Yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dr. Trinkle.
Thank you, Dr. Mann.
Do I just exit out of this? Okay.
This is going to get you time.
Listen.
That's what I said.
I, I received the penalty. We did it last week.
Let the record show.
Thank you, Chris.
So, now, yeah, this is the big time, right here. I'm still waiting for my stepstool, but that'll come, that'll come. So, sorry for the delay. I know, we just learned. Okay, so thank you for that transition and good evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about AK-6 ELA core programming curriculum, but it's actually a lot more than that. This is about developing great readers and great students and successful students. This started by asking ourselves one simple question, what do we do? And we couldn't quantify that, we couldn't answer that question. So we started last year reviewing our MTSS process and evaluated our interventions. And through that, we recognized a systemic programmatic approach that had a lot of variability, not just between buildings, but between classrooms in our buildings. And we all agreed at that point that a systematic phonics instruction program was essential. I think that is a settled issue. And essential, too, was a comprehensive literacy program. That includes building knowledge, that includes acquisition, language development, the writing process and responsive teaching. So this work was extremely collaborative, and I want to highlight just the exceptional work of the team of educators, and I want to take a moment and identify a few people. Thank you, Dr. Chromiak, for starting this process early spring last year. This has been a lot of work in the making, kicked off by Dr. Chromiak. I'd like to thank Mr. Mansfield, Dr. Solometto, Mrs. Tarek Collins, Mrs. Cheryl Hurick, who are here tonight in support of this, and Mrs. Rochelle Huffgard, who was not able to make it tonight. All three, all of those people that I just mentioned were active members and critical members of this process for us. We also layered in K-6 administrators and a team of 13 additional teachers throughout this process to kind of research the essential components of a literacy program. Here we go. So you may ask, like, why and how did we get here? And I think last year, you've heard us speak at length about our MTSS process. And it was about this, this time last year that I think Dr. Mann made me do my first presentation during the first week on my job, which I am on my annual, this is my year anniversary of, of working here in the Southernly High School District. And at that time, we started aggressively evaluating our curricular needs and addressing aspects of our curriculum. That provided us with that ideal opportunity to really evaluate whether we had a core, a tier-one core ELA program that met our needs. It's like the foundation of a home, it's an essential component. That process, too, allowed us to move right into selecting that phonics resource to further support tiers two and tier three for interventions for our kiddos. And when we engaged in that MTSS process, we noticed those foundational gaps, which allowed us to start layering in that research and investigative process for core, core curriculum programming. The idea here was to get every student what they need, whether they're gifted and talented or in need of intervention and support, and anywhere in between, was to give them the resource that they need to be successful. But once we identified those gaps, we implemented foundations, and we are in that first year of implementation, we're still receiving professional development, we have professional development scheduled for Friday. Those gaps are being identified, and simultaneously, we engaged in the research process for our new core ELA program. So Dr. Solometto and Dr. Chromiak will be coming up here to talk to us about those steps that we took and hopefully answer any questions you may have about the program we're about to review with you.
Thank you, Dr. Trinkle. And thank you everyone for being here tonight to hear a little bit about the ELA core program that we have selected for your approval. I'm personally very excited about it. I think my enthusiasm is reflective of the enthusiasm that we all have for this program. So what I'm going to do first is just spend a little bit of time going over with you the background for why we chose the program that we chose. And so the image that you're seeing up there on the screen, you may be familiar with, it's been out there in the public eye quite a bit recently, and it is called Scarborough's Rope. And what Scarborough's Rope does is it provides us a model for understanding the components of skilled reading. So what you see there are strands of a rope broken into two sections. There's the lower segment, and then there's the upper segment. The lower segment are your word recognition strands. So those are your phonological awareness strands, your decoding strands and your sight recognition strands. And those are really what we would refer to as our foundational skills. When you look above that, you see that language comprehension and that there is a much longer list there of strands. Those are your background knowledge, your vocabulary, your language structures, your verbal reasoning and your literacy knowledge. Those strands come together to create, over time, skilled reading. When instruction is delivered that addresses each of those strands, what results are readers that are automatic, that are accurate, that can make meaning of what they read. So we knew whatever program we chose, we wanted it to be aligned with Scarborough's Rope. And so the next slide sort of brings into focus what we have done here in Southernly High so far to address Scarborough's Rope. And we've already done many important things. So if you look to the bottom of the rope, the word recognition strands, you'll see there in a blue box, we have written foundations integrity. As Dr. Trinkle alluded to earlier, this year, we have put into place the foundations program. This is the program that students in our K-3 buildings are receiving that provides for them foundational skill instruction. In conjunction with that, they're also receiving instruction in integrity, which is phonemic awareness and phonological awareness. So that's already going on in our buildings, and it's going quite well. The other component, if you look off to the right, under the part where the strands weave together, you'll see that there's the word G-odes there. G-odes is the program of decodable readers that we've brought into our K-3 classrooms, and it's really in, in just the K-2 classrooms this year, which are texts that students read independently that allows them to practice the skills that they're learning in foundations. What sort of differentiates G-odes, decodable texts from other decodable texts that are out there, are that G-odes are not merely texts that are being used for practice of foundational skills. G-odes are texts that also build knowledge, which is what makes them so unique and is what makes them such a perfect fit for Witten Wisdom, which is what you're going to see at the top of the screen there, above the upper strands. Witten Wisdom is the program that we are recommending this evening. Witten Wisdom is a knowledge-building program, and I'm going to be talking a lot more about that coming up. But what is really so beautiful about us recommending Witten Wisdom for our classrooms is that the topics in Witten Wisdom align directly with the topics in G-odes. So students sitting in a K-2 classroom, receiving Witten Wisdom instruction, are learning the subject matter that they need to support their understanding of the G-odes texts that they are reading independently as practice for their foundational skills. Now, of course, Witten Wisdom will also go grades three to six, when the foundational skill instruction changes a lot, and I, I don't want to say it drops off, but it sort of just becomes more advanced. When that happens, we have a lot more content knowledge developing, happening in grades three to six. And Witten Wisdom really does do a phenomenal job of that. So this brings me to my next point, which is that this really is more than just about reading instruction, and again, Dr. Trinkle alluded to that point as well. To speak to that upper, upper strand that you had seen on Scarborough's Rope, which was background knowledge. An increasing body of research is suggesting the importance of knowledge building to teaching reading comprehension. I have up there a little allusion to the baseball study, which you'll see actually took place in 1988. So it's not new, but the results of that study are becoming more prevalent now than ever. And I don't know how familiar you are with that study, but essentially, these two researchers took sixty-some kids and an empty classroom in a school building and gave these kids a passage, a very short passage about baseball to read. And it was just a little narrative kind of story about a part of a baseball game. So the students read it, and then they were brought to this classroom where a little baseball diamond was set up with little miniature wooden figures, and the students had to sort of reenact what they read in the passage, and then they had to answer a comprehension quiz about what they read. Now, these students were sort of broken up into different categories. One group of students were students who were perceived to be proficient readers, but they knew very little about baseball. The other group of students were perceived to be poor readers by all other measures, but they knew a lot about baseball. Interestingly, the students who were perceived to be poor readers but knew a lot about baseball did just as well, if not better, on the comprehension quiz than the students who were perceived to be good readers but knew very little about baseball. And so what that speaks to is the importance of background knowledge building, that if students have a solid basis in background knowledge in a topic, they can read texts that are increasingly more complex, that might rival the sorts of texts that their peers, who are considered to be very good readers, can access. And so that's a, a big tenet of the philosophy behind a program like Witten Wisdom. If we bootstrap, meaning we give kids lots of access to different types of texts and different types of materials that build their knowledge in certain areas, in specific areas of science and social studies and even the arts, students can use that background knowledge to help them become better readers. And of course, this has the double benefit of teaching them about topics in science, social studies and the arts. I have a quote up there that I happen to like, which is, knowledge is like Velcro. So the more we learn, the more we're going to learn. Knowledge likes to stick to other knowledge. So when we- So when we are having students read authentic literary and expository texts on these various topics, not only are we improving their reading ability, we're improving their knowledge base. So when students get to that history class or that advanced science class in middle or high school, they're not attending that class with fresh eyes. They've already seen and learned a lot of this content. And they're more well-equipped to learn whatever it is that those middle or high school teachers are going to teach them. So this also sort of ties into what we in education call the Matthew Effect, which really just is kind of a title for the phenomenon of the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. So what you can see there is you've got these two yellow bars, and it shows good readers, and it shows poor readers underneath. And how, when students are young and they're learning to read, there isn't all that much of a gap between what good readers and poor readers can do. But as time goes on, the good readers are going to read more because they enjoy it and because it's easy for them. And because they're reading more and more, they're getting better and better because they're practicing, and they're learning more and more content. And you can see how much growth a good reader would make over time. A poor reader, because they don't necessarily want to read, it's not enjoyable for them, it's hard for them, they just don't do it as much. And therefore, over time, they're not making that progress, and they're not learning as much content. And so one of the things that we can do to mitigate this issue is present children from a very young age with a quality knowledge-building core curriculum. And so that's part of our purpose in recommending a program like Witten Wisdom. To illustrate sort of the same point, but something somewhat different, this really just shows grades one, two, and three. Struggling readers being in red, successful readers in green. And what this shows is the amount of intervention time it takes. So if we have, in grade one, again, struggling readers in red, successful readers in green, if we're trying to kind of close that gap in grade one, what that will take is quality core instruction plus 30 to 40 minutes of intervention time. By the time we get to third grade, that intervention time has grown to two and a half to three hours. So if we're going to do something, again, to sort of mitigate that gap, we have to make sure that that core instruction really is knowledge-building, quality, and that it's everything that it needs to be in order to prevent that gap from widening as the years go on. So with that, we're going to get a little bit more into the specifics of Witten Wisdom and how we came to this determination that this is the curriculum that we would like to recommend. And so for that, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Chromiak.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, so my part of the presentation is really to talk about our process and how we reviewed programs and narrowed it down to our selection that we are presenting you with tonight. So what we started with was, if you are not familiar with EdReports, it is such a valuable thing for educators. It is a collection of coaches, state content area leaders, and all educators who spend an average of about 150 hours per series, reading math, whatever they're evaluating, to really look into three different gateways of what they find is really important for reading instruction. So the first gateway that you'll see up there, it's pretty small, but they're looking at the text quality and complexity of a program. So does it, is it rigorous? Is it aligned to standards? Is it holding that high bar? And are there quality texts within the program? The second gateway that they move into is the, again, building knowledge that you just heard about. Does it have solid vocabulary and background knowledge instruction? Is there a variety of fiction and nonfiction texts? And are kids expected to master those high rigorous standards by the end of the program? And finally, what they look at is teacher usability, because you can have this great program, but is it user-friendly for teachers? Are there supports for teachers in there built in? And of course, are there supports for a range of learners? So what Ed Reports does then is releases a report that rates all of these areas and basically gives it like the green light, like, good, they passed these gateways, or, you know, here's where they were lacking in certain gateways. So what we did was, we started with a total of 11 ELA programs. We pretty, we cast out a pretty broad net. And after looking at the Ed Reports for these programs, six of them met all three gateways or green for these three particular areas. We also added an additional two to look at because the publishers and reps were in the process of revamping and having a new Ed Report release. So we wanted to make sure we really looked at a lot of programs very thoroughly and ones that met all of these high standards that we're looking for. So then we had eight programs to evaluate. So the next step that we did was say, okay, they got green on Ed Reports, but we need to look deeper and really more closely at all of the components of reading. So what we did as a smaller team of administrators, instructional coach, and all of our reading specialists, some of who are here tonight and did amazing work, is we took the Reading League's Curriculum Evaluation Tool. And the Reading League really is based off of the research and evidence-aligned reading instruction. So this was a tool that we used to really dive deeper into that language comprehension, reading comprehension, writing assessments, and just the overall instructional design. So it's a pretty thick rubric that we then went through. We had samples sent from the vendors. We also obtained online access to really dig in and look at, again, all of those components, which we had to look at, green flags, red flags, again, based on the science of reading and research. So what we did was, we did look at, we looked at it through a K-3 lens. We looked at it through a four-to-six lens. We came back together. We, you know, looked at our rubrics, really went into depth. We did this over like three full days to really dig into these programs and make sure that we vetted them as thoroughly as possible. So after looking at eight, there was very, there was two very clear, I guess, front runners, is what you would say. They had very high scores according to our rubrics. And our team felt very comfortable presenting these to then our literacy committee team, which again was comprised of 13 additional teachers ranging K-6 and additional administrators. So we did earlier, we presented, we had the vendors come in again and did presentations for both of the programs. There was opportunities for question and answer. And even before they came, our teachers and people on the literacy committee had access to these programs online and an opportunity to kind of dig in themselves and read and learn more about these programs prior to the vendors coming in. So we had samples for review. We spent the afternoon really, again, with a bigger committee than diving into these two programs and talking about the pros and cons of each program. And I will pass it back because there was a very, again, from this and bringing more people in and bringing the classroom teachers in and having more eyes on this, there was a very clear choice.
Also, too, we did fold in grade seven, eight as well. We connected those content area leaders from grade seven and eight and had them part of this process throughout, just for continuity. While this does have a seven through 12 component, it wasn't quite what I think should have, what we thought as a collective that we were ready for at this point. But we did fold them in just so they had an opportunity to see what we were talking about as we transitioned from sixth to seventh grade, so that they kind of are aware of what we were looking at. Sorry.
Okay. So to echo what Dr. Chromiak had said, that by the end of this committee meeting, there was one curriculum that had risen directly to the top. And without hesitation, every ELA committee member was all about Witten Wisdom. And so here, what I'm going to be doing next is just giving you an overview of this program. What you see here are some of the hallmark aspects of Witten Wisdom. A lot of what's up there, I've already spoken to, just in terms of giving you the background of the philosophy behind that this is a knowledge-building program, that topics recur within grade levels, but also between grade levels, so that students are revisiting topics as they go on through the grade levels and perhaps learning a little bit more about those topics in a more expansive fashion as the years go on, therefore building that knowledge. One of the things that I think is so impressive about Witten Wisdom is that it's not just science and social studies, it's also the arts. And Witten Wisdom has a nice emphasis on using pieces of art to learn about different topics throughout history. Art is, as I'm sure you know, often underrepresented in our classrooms and in our school buildings. It's also a nice equity access point for students. You don't have to be a great reader to discuss art. And so it's an opportunity for all students to have rich discussions, practice their critical thinking skills. So we, as a committee, were really impressed by the inclusion of that art piece as well. Students have reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language instruction integrated throughout their daily instruction and woven into every model. And you can see some pictured there, some of the texts that are included in this curriculum. They're all rich, authentic texts. Many of them are award winners. Many of them are the same texts that we enjoyed as children. So I, I think that the list of texts included in the modules really is quite impressive as well. So what you see here, these are some of the strengths of the program. And the reason that you see those in direct quotes is because those are direct quotes from members of our ELA committee. When we sat down to dive into these materials after having heard the vendor presentation, we asked members of the committee to write down some of their initial impressions of the different components of this curriculum in different areas. And so in going back and looking through those responses, I couldn't help but be really pleased and really impressed with what I saw. It's pretty evident that the members of our ELA committee were very satisfied with what they saw in terms of the various components of the program and what's being offered to our children if we so choose to go with this program. So if you take a look at those carefully, you'll really see that this program made quite an impression on our committee. Any new program, though, would have growing pains. And so there are a couple of caveats up there that we just wanted to make sure that we addressed. The first year of implementation with anything will likely be a challenge. And particularly with a knowledge-building curriculum, students may not have that background knowledge like they would if they've been through this program for many years. So teachers and administrators are going to make sure that we provide the support that's necessary to make sure that students get what they need and they make that improvement over time. There is going to need to be a philosophy shift in order to implement this well. Reading and writing instruction will look and feel different than it has in the past. And that's going to be for teachers, as well as students, as well as families. And so it's going to be really important that we communicate that, that we educate everyone. We're all in this together, and it's going to be worth it in the end. So let's talk a little bit about next steps. One of the documents that Dr. Mann had sent out prior to this evening's meeting was a timeline. Most of the events on that timeline have already come and gone. But here are the four that are still ahead of us. So with your approval, what we hope to do on the March 10th Professional Learning Day is have a full day of professional development offered by Great Minds, which is the parent company of Witten Wisdom. So they'll come in and they'll do a full day of professional development for our teachers. And then we have another half-day scheduled on April 5th, where we hope to give teachers even more time to dig into those materials and really get acquainted. We hope that by the end of April, we're developing some planned courses and some scope and sequence documents. By the end of May, we hope to be preparing for implementation, as well as preparing summer professional development opportunities, so that when students, or, I'm sorry, not students, when teachers return in August, students will also return. But when teachers return in August, they're feeling prepared and ready to implement this really, really well. So I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Trinkle to talk about some community involvement.
Just a few things to consider, I think, before we talk about how we unpack this for community involvement and for community participation. You know, we're at a time when information spreads very quickly. And it can be, sadly, some important topics are often oversimplified or even polarized. And it would be irresponsible for us to just simply call our reading program because we have a great phonics program, a comprehensive literacy program, and nothing more. And I think teachers and students would not benefit from that, especially when so much is at stake. So I think many are having conversations like this right now. And we're planning through this program to immerse our students in content-rich, specific information that sparks discussion. And it prepares to tackle more complicated texts, which we have been weaving through in and out of this presentation. The materials in this are challenging by design. I think we can all speak to that. We were all kind of like, wow, this is amazing. Because when we talk about having students accomplish one grade level's worth of work in a year, this is a stretch. This is a stretch we're looking for, for our students. We know, even from Dr. Solometto's information before, students read better sooner when they're confronted with complex sentences and advanced vocabulary. This is what Witten Wisdom will offer us. And rather than taking a content-anemic approach to skill acquisition or instruction, they connect articles, books, the arts around historical components. And that is building content-area knowledge across all of the fields. And that's what we're looking for. Our children need to be challenged by a rigorous literacy program. It helps not just developing readers, but writers, speakers, and good listeners. That is what's offered in this program. And with thoughtful planning and even more structured support, fundamentally, we will put the educational needs of our students in the forefront. And we will then situate our educators to provide our students with the best opportunities to be powerful readers and writers. And that's what we're looking for. To do so, otherwise, we will put our students at a disadvantage. So Dr. Solometto will be talking through what we could, what this could look like from a community standpoint. Certainly, this would be in draft form. Upon hopeful approval, we will be taking more active steps to, to kind of unravel that a little bit more quickly.
So just to piggyback, complex texts include complex ideas. And as you've heard us say several times now, that a central tenet of this curriculum is that children should be reading complex texts at or above grade level. And that will spark some conversation, which is what we want them to have. We want them having those discussions. We want them learning rich content. And so Great Minds isn't numb, they aren't naive to the fact that Witten Wisdom has appeared in some headlines and has caused some controversy. And so they address that right on their website. They put this statement out. And I think that in going through the materials and really looking through, taking that deep dive, the ELA committee agrees with this statement that the modules are rich, they're complex, they're thought-provoking, but they maintain age-appropriateness and a sensitivity to multiple perspectives. So in terms of community outreach, we want to make sure that our larger school community feels comfortable with this curriculum, that they understand this curriculum and how it works and the philosophy behind it. So we're very much hoping with your approval that we can have our very first ELA event before the end of the school year, inviting in members of the school community to preview the materials and ask us questions. We're, we're very open to having a dialogue about this curriculum. And then going into next school year, hoping to have lots of family literacy nights to kind of showcase all of the various aspects of this rich and complex curriculum. Those ideas that you see listed up there are pulled directly from the Great Minds website. And that wasn't all of them. Those were just some of the ones that I sort of felt like were really unique and interesting. And as a parent, I would want to attend those. They sounded like they'd be engaging in a lot of fun. So we're going to really try and get the community involved and get parents and families to understand this curriculum and really get behind it. In terms of home communication, Witten Wisdom does a really good job of providing materials so that families understand what their children are learning in their ELA instruction. There's a family letter that goes home at the beginning of the year, and it just gives an overview of the curriculum and the philosophy and how it works. And then there are these family tip sheets, which are intended to go home at the beginning of each module. They introduce the module's topic. They tell a little bit about the books and the poems and the videos and et cetera that students are going to be interacting with throughout the course of that module. And it also provides, these tip sheets provide questions that families can ask their children and various different ways that families can extend the knowledge that their children are learning in class, and available in multiple languages. So a really great family connection resource. All of these resources, plus more, are available right on the Witten Wisdom website. So the very last big idea we have to talk to you about here today in terms of Witten Wisdom is implementation and professional development. Witten Wisdom comes with a really comprehensive, thorough professional development package. And so the very first Professional Development Day, which, as I said before, we're hoping to have this March, is all about the philosophy and the theory behind the program. And teachers will get a full day of exposure with, to that. The second day is getting in there and planning for implementation and preparing for that. And then there's more sessions throughout the first few years of implementation focusing on various aspects of the program, like writing, fluency, and assessment. Sprinkled in between is coaching. Coaching comes part of Coaching comes part of the Witten Wisdom professional development package. And so we would have coaches from Witten Wisdom coming in to work with not only teachers, but also with leaders so that instructional leaders can help teachers. So again, is this a big shift? Yes, it is. Is there tremendous support for our teachers as they guide their students through this? Absolutely. So ultimately, our goal here, of course, is to build teacher capacity, to give teachers the tools and the expertise that they need to be successful. We want teachers to be effective. We want students to learn. We will take the necessary steps to ensure that teachers are well-equipped to productively implement this curriculum in their classroom. That includes giving teachers sufficient time to meet with colleagues and plan. We want teachers to be able to implement this with integrity. So yes, implementation with fidelity is important, but we also want teachers to make sure that they understand that they are the experts in the room, keeping their student needs at the forefront. So I would love to extend to you now a sincere invitation to come and see the materials at Central Office, to talk through them, have a dialogue with any of us at any time. We're very excited to have those conversations with you, and we'd be happy to make ourselves available. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration, and we are open to any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. What was the curriculum program that came in second place? What was the name of the one?
It was Imagine Learning. Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you. That was a really well-done presentation. And I really appreciate all the, it's clear there was a lot of work behind the scenes that went into this. So I think that process in and of itself speaks highly for the selection of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Emily here, I just want to echo what was already said. And I appreciate all of the different points you incorporated, including family communication and making that home-school connection at an elementary level especially. And my concern for this as well was, I love how you included the resources for teachers. I had a question, two questions, actually. One was about the coaches you mentioned. That's great, available, I think the slide said, for two years. I assume it's a limited visit kind of. Is this something where our teachers will have to then take over or be taught how to be coaches? Or is it a training for them? Or is it truly the staff, the coaching staff will be brought in to help teachers implement this in their classroom? Or is it, we'll train your coaches, kind of a thing?
Yeah, so the coaches from Witten Wisdom will come in and they'll lead sessions with our teachers and with our instructional coach to help build their capacity to allow them to go back to their classrooms and be more effective with their instruction.
Okay, so our instructional coaches will be helping to implement, but the Witten Wisdom people will be training our coaches that can then go?
Yes.
And that training of our coaches covers a two-year introduction period?
That's right.
Okay, thanks for that. And my second question, thank you. And my other question was, I know sometimes in prior reviews of curriculum, especially at the elementary level, we have a small portion of the population that's serviced through our Spanish immersion program. Was that, is this compatible? Is it considered? Do we have any additional expenditures or things to overcome in servicing that program and having the same curriculum and access? I know that is a huge handicap for you folks in developing, especially ELA programs. And so I was curious how that went, or if that's also being considered, if that's a separate thing we'll have to handle.
It's separate. We went into this process with an open mind, that if there was a program that checked our boxes, that met our needs, and it had a Spanish component, we would be all in. This has Spanish components, but it is not a Spanish immersion.
Right, more of a, like a, to address this. I would assume it would have Spanish components to address the needs of students who are learning Spanish and English concurrently in the classroom.
This program was made, this determination, this selection for this process was made with that in mind, knowing that we'll have to do a simultaneous process to determine what students in Spanish immersion will need. Now, they were given some additional supplemental resources to match what we were doing in our ELA this year. And we will be facilitating a very similar process for that.
Okay, so this program won't be implemented in the Spanish immersion program, but it'll have to be addressed separately?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So a question and kind of following up on something that you spoke to and the controversial nature of this program. And just doing a quick scan, talk to us a little bit about how you plan to utilize the material that may be more controversial and what the balance in the classroom or other communication that will be put with that to make sure that the appropriate context, the appropriate learning takes place around these topics.
Yeah, so I think that when you look at the headlines, you know, they're out there. When you look at the instruction that is provided through the curriculum, the texts that are provided, truly, I feel, I'll reiterate what I said before, it is age-appropriate. And it is done with sensitivity to multiple perspectives. And so we talked a little bit about implementation with integrity. We are going to emphasize implementation with fidelity. And if they're, while keeping student needs in mind, that's what implementation with integrity is. But if teachers are implementing with fidelity and they're following the guidelines of the curriculum, we would hope that that sense of controversy is sort of not a part of the classroom discussion. With the communication that goes home to families at the beginning of every module, families will be informed of the topics that their children will be learning. Any concerns that parents have prior to implementation of the module, they'll be welcome to reach out to the teacher or to the building administrator. And so hopefully, through that process of fidelity to the materials, through strong home and school communication, we can sort of be really proactive to prevent some of what I think you're speaking to. And so I hope that answers your question, or if anybody else has.
No, it does. And I mean, just scanning through, some of the topics need to be discussed.
Yes.
And the perspective around the topics need to be learned and shared so that we learn from history and learn in an appropriate way from history, so we don't repeat it.
Right.
So I'm pleasantly pleased to see that. But I also know from recent experience in this district that some of these topics can get constructed in people's minds in not-so-productive ways. So I think we need to do a very deliberate and appropriate communication of what's going to be discussed, how it's going to be discussed, and what's the perspectives that will be shared. And if it's built into the curriculum, great, but let's stay to the curriculum and not go down certain pathways. Give the perspective that needs to be there so people learn.
Great question.
If I could offer just a thought. First, is there 176 books? I think there's 176 books. They will all be posted, right? In other words, it'll be completely transparent. Everyone will see every book that's on the curriculum. And by necessity, there will be controversial topics that come up. Because when you have complex readers in fourth grade, because we are going to have great readers who are very, very young, it's very hard to find complex texts that complex readers want to read that don't have, you know, complex ideas in them. And complex ideas will create conversation, they'll create learning, but they'll create controversy. And Witten Wisdom is one of the few programs I've seen that has been criticized on both the left and the right ends of the political spectrum because people will identify a topic, a book, as biased, right? But, and again, we will work through that with parents. And critically, what we're doing is transparent. And we recognize the importance to reach out to people so we're not surprising them. And the other thing is, you know, that this, this, when you're teaching this, you move, right? And there's not a lot of time to go off on, well, here's a book that I think would be good or something else. I mean, this is very much orchestrated. And we still rely on the great creativity and talents of the teachers in the classroom. But, you know, this is, this is a program that we're going to be working on very directly. And people will know what it is we're doing. And to the extent that they have a concern for whatever part of the political spectrum they come from, and those things will come up. We're going to address them very openly and honestly in the best interest of the children, in the classroom, and their parents.
We talked at length with both vendors about those concerns being, you can easily Google articles and see things from positives to negatives. For all of them, we worked out in particular two that we really went and solved representations from the vendors. Even as early as today, we were having conversations, we had a thought that. It's in the forefront of our mind. We intend to be as open, as available to anybody who has questions. Portions of the curriculum are up in our office, ready to go for anybody that wants to see.
There, are there modules? I was trying to understand the, is someone going to come in and teach our teachers about how to? Is it scripted? Or, and who makes that script? And who are the folks that are going to be training? If there are going to be people training our teachers in that regard?
Yes, so Witten Wisdom is not a scripted program, but it is very structured. And so speaking to that professional development package that comes with the purchase of this curriculum, I had talked about the first day is all philosophy and theory and knowledge building for the teachers. Starting with that second day of professional development is the, how do you prepare to teach this? How do you plan to implement this curriculum? And so the professional development, the coaching, the support that teachers receive, it's very comprehensive, it's very thorough. Yes, it's different than what teachers have used in the past, but there's a lot of supports in place so that teachers don't feel like, you know, they're just kind of drowning. They feel like they're, they know what they're doing. They're going into this in such a way where they're going to deliver effective instruction. And so it's, although it's different and it's not scripted, the teachers will have the knowledge base that they need in order to be successful.
Who developed that? I mean, ultimately, who developed Witten Wisdom and who developed the modules or that training?
That's the, Great Minds is the parent company. And so they created Witten Wisdom as one of their English Language Arts curriculum programs. For grades K to eight, we're only using it K to six. And so they developed all the modules. The modules were, if you would like to see what those are, that was one of the documents that Dr. Mann set out. So you should have that. And so Witten Wisdom developed those modules, and they developed the professional development and coaching plans that go along with those modules.
And what is Great Minds, where are they located? Is that a for-profit company? Or is that associated with an educational college or university?
I think they're not for, I think they're a non-profit.
It's not for profit.
In fact, yeah, I wouldn't say that Shannon mentioned that. Yeah, that they're a nonprofit company.
But I don't believe they're a coaching university.
Yeah. They're also the parent company behind G Ods, which are the decodable readers that we have in place. Same parent company.
I do like the idea of evidence-aligned curriculum. I think it's important to have some sort of metric behind it so that we can see that there's an upward mobility within the learning process. And I appreciate everybody's work on this because it does take a lot of time to evaluate this stuff. I was glad to hear that you evaluated multiple programs. So by the time we got to that slide, you took my question away, which was good. Two last things. The first is, how long does a new curriculum implementation typically last? So in other words, when you get this moving, how many years, for example, would you expect the life of this product to be?
How long do you think it will last after we implement it?
Yeah, yeah.
Years.
Okay.
You know, we are not going into this, this new program evaluation and implementation of a curriculum to reassess it. And we will be evaluating and reassessing throughout every year, which I think is an important piece of the process. But it is not something that we hope within four to five to six years that we're thinking, oh, we made the wrong choice. That's not what we went into this with the goal of identifying a new curriculum. It's that this is something that we expect to have and have implemented and utilized in our classrooms for the years to come.
All right, so tied to that then, how old is this particular addition, if you will, of this? How, is it fairly new or has it been around for a little bit? Do you know?
I know that it's not a new program, but I do believe they had, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't they just update this for this implementation year that we're not in, but last year? So the curriculum that we reviewed would be the most revised iteration of the curriculum? I believe that both of them in our two were in that process. Okay, right, so the newest iteration.
Okay, because I do know we've been using G Ods, the G Ods portion of this for a while. And then the last thing is, how long has it been? Now, we have a lot of new people here now, but how long has it been since the last curriculum update in this particular area? Does anyone have any idea of that?
I don't want to guess, but it's been more than six, close to eight, perhaps? It's been a while.
Yeah, so when you compare that versus, you know, of course, all the goods and bads that you see through that, and then this, what are some of the comments or highlights you'd bring forth, you know, comparing the two and why this is so imperative?
Go ahead, Lynn, I see you. I was just going to say, currently, our case is very fragmented. So right now, we're using a program in K-3. They're using a completely different program in 4-5 and then a completely different thing in grade 6. So right now, there's no continuity or, yeah, it's a little, yeah, mishmashy. And then when you actually look at the programs we've been using and you look at it through the lens of, did this review? So looking at Everports and looking at the daily tool, the rest. So where we're looking for green and all of these high standards, they're not there. So this is why it's really important to look very closely at every one of them.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this last year, you and I. And then also the component of the phonetic-based reading skills, which were, I think, if I remember correctly, lacking from what I understand and have known. Thank you.
So that ties into, Emily over here, that ties into a question I had, and Dr. Kremiak addressed it, and so Mr. Mon, the question of what is, this will be a successful program and we will have better readers who, you know, aren't lacking in certain areas. And so what will be, at what point will, what's the plan for the next rollout into middle school and beyond? Just for the continuity sake of, and also, thank you for pointing, thank you for pointing out there are many different programs. Because part of what's happening now, for instance, is if you are learning a set skill in third grade, then you're learning maybe the same set skill in fifth grade and completely omitting. Because if you have many different systems, this one says, we'll teach that in fourth and this in third. And this one says, we'll teach that in fourth and this in third. And meanwhile, nobody learns how to whatever. So thank you for addressing that, that's wonderful. But my question is then, how do you roll that out and continue that progress? And at what point do you think we're going to be at a point where we'll be seeing these students roll into programs that we currently have at a secondary level where they're going to absolutely need a different curricular base? What's the next step?
Yeah, so it'll, you know, it takes a few years to track the data of students going through a new program to see the progress that they're making. So of course, we're keeping our eyes on the data as these first few years of implementation tick by, as these students go through the K-6, their K-6 education, and then go on into middle school. We certainly, we need to think about that next step too. So K-6 is kind of like the horse and 7-12 is the cart. So that will be something, that is something that is on our minds. But this really needed to come first. It doesn't mean that change isn't happening at the secondary level because certainly that's on the forefront, but this is first.
Yeah, do you have an idea of, sorry, I phrased that poorly. Do you have an idea of years or how, when you will be looking to bring the next set of curriculum for the secondary level to kind of?
Hopefully very soon.
I was just going to say, are we talking 12 months? Are we talking very, okay, so this is an active, ongoing, we're not, who that's done? Now we can move on to science and, no, we're still going to, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yes. The curriculum cycle, is that what we're hitting? Thank you, okay, gotcha.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? So then I'm assuming, since this is K through 6, and obviously, your first year of the program, the students in sixth, fifth, you know, it's a building process. And the ones that are in the upper levels are not going to have gone through that process continuously. So I'm assuming there's some kind of staggered implementation approach that they're going to advise, right, for this? Because obviously, the sixth graders are going to be the least equipped and aren't going to be at the point you would be in five years, for example, so.
That is part of our request of years.
Okay.
Of that, to give us that.
That coaching bit, like when they come? Okay.
Do any of these types of programs, the other ones that were looked at, do they allow for students or families to choose from a number of books on a subject? As opposed to, these are the set books that will be read and discussed? I think one thing that comes to mind for me-
I, I think one thing that comes to mind for me is your mentioning of the Matthew effect. So one area that I was interested in was looking at whether there are any real texts about faith. Um, and I didn't really see any that would have been offered by, you know, sort of the major religions of, of the, of the, of the world, uh, Muslim or Hindu or Christian or Judeo. Uh, what was in here, what I saw was, uh, mostly Greek mythology. And so from my mind, it seems to me that if you had a, a child that was raised in a Hindu family and was very interested in, interested in that and had the, uh, you know, the origin stories, uh, from that religion, uh, and taught that, that that person would be, uh, under your theory of the Matthew effect, um, more interested and better able to, um, digest and progress, uh, with, um, a book that would reflect maybe some of their faith and culture, uh, better than say a Greek mythology or Roman mythology, which is what is, um, mainly offered, uh, in this grouping. Uh, and so I, I wonder if, um, if there is curricula that allows, besides this program, that allows for flexibility of students to pick, uh, from a set of books, uh, areas that they have interest in, uh, because it would therefore, um, you know, I think, under your theory of the Matthew effect, you know, allow potentially for, um, better understanding in it. And then likewise, if a family, you know, maybe, it may be less controversial to a family, uh, for that person to be reading about something that they've chosen that reflects, uh, their culture and religion.
Yeah. I mean, I think I, I know what you're saying. Um, and to that end, none of the curriculum programs that we looked at were so open-ended that it was, you know, the student just chooses any book they want. Um, all of them were a lot more structured than that, and that goes along with the whole idea of structured literacy. Um, but by that same token, no reading curriculum worth its salt is going to discourage students from reading. Um, and so what this will do is it will open hopefully students' minds, um, and extend their knowledge bases so that if this is a unit that they're in about Greek mythology and they're learning about, you know, the different perhaps religious aspects that went along with Greek mythology, then perhaps that student will connect it to their own religious background and then want to go and read about their own religious background, um, because they're interested and they have a knowledge base about something that might be connected. Um, and there is a piece of this curriculum, which they call volume of reading, which is all about taking the reading skills and the knowledge base that you've collected in the classroom and then extending that into your own independent reading. Um, so certainly, you know, that student wouldn't be discouraged from reading whatever it is that he or she is most interested in. This curriculum will give that student hopefully the knowledge base and the skills necessary to do that good reading.
I'd like to, uh, follow up with something from Mr. Dimick and Mrs. Serene, or Dr. Serene, I'm sorry. My apologies. Um, the question is, when you're transitioning from now till this is implemented and how that relates to students who were caught in the three-year quagmire of catch-up? And we've got this graph here, which of course happens in any, anything, whether it be math, science, reading, anything. And how do we make that transition without increasing that gap for those particular students? Of course, it may be a couple of year thing, but I think that's a concern of mine and how they don't get caught in the trap of not only having that gap, but then an additional portion of it with the learning curve of getting a new curriculum up and et cetera.
So our MTSS process is very strong. Uh, it went through an overhaul last year. I have been impressed with what I've seen, um, in our, our elementary buildings as far as how student needs are identified through data, how, uh, those groups are put together, how, you know, their, their progress monitored, how they're given the services that they need to make that growth. Um, and so that MTSS process will continue. Um, and that will be benefiting those students that are having those needs as, as that process is doing right now. Uh, I know what you're saying about the, the new curriculum and this being a heavy lift for everyone, and then you have these kids who struggle on top of that. Um, but I think that particularly this program, because it creates an access point for everyone, regardless of your ability to read proficiently, there's so much discussion, there's so much content building, um, that I think more so than some of the other programs that we looked at, this one provides an entry point for those students to develop their critical thinking skills. And so as we begin to plug those holes in the foundational skills through MTSS, once those skills come up, those students will now have this knowledge building curriculum behind them to continue to make that growth.
Thank you.
Not, not to go to the mundane, I know, Dr. Trinkley, you gave me a slide on this that I didn't include in my, how much is it going to cost us? Cause then people will be wondering.
Uh, well, we're working on that. We didn't want to put a bar for it.
You have it on there?
That's my question.
Okay, yeah. I knew that one.
I have rough estimates.
You'll be the last to know.
I have rough estimates.
Yeah. I know we had some numbers, just, and we have some grant fundings too.
Yeah. And a lot of this will be covered, um, which has been earmarked through some ESSR funding, through some grant funding and through our curriculum budget, um, for professional development, title funding. Um, professional development, I think, range anywhere between forty, fifty thousand dollars, which is not atypical, um, for a full-scale implementation. Uh, and that's coming with some, I think, some perks based on a little call we had today that they're not going to increase cost for. Um, I also kept their, I'm hoping to keep their, they had a five percent increase after the year. And I asked them, because we were talking about this as a goal before that, to keep that price below five percent, and I think you're always agreeable to that, if you're not Mr. Pepe. And, uh, so that could be, I think, I don't, I don't, this is just a rough estimate, these numbers are not nearly to where I think they might be. It could be anywhere. That could be good for curriculum K to six, for, uh, for resources, both consumables, digital access, teacher addition, I think three hundred thousand. I don't, I'm not sure, but I think that might be where we land, to make sure that we have enough resources to get this up off.
And then what about the ongoing costs then? Cause you're going to maybe subscriptions or?
Can we do that now?
Yeah, I was going to say, in all fairness, similar. The curriculum, the curriculum budget is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So this should fit within the curriculum budget with additional assistance from grants and other things that you were talking about.
And should we receive approval, we will be looking at not just one year, but three year to five year, um, purchases. A little hesitant about the five year, but if we have three year, that will give us a significant discount, um, for packages. We haven't even seen those numbers yet. Um, we have yet to provide some teacher information to give us the cost, but those are some rough estimates.
Okay. So in addition to the cost, if you could, go back to Great Minds, because I, I, I know that I would like to see it, and again, going back to communication to the community, it would be very helpful to know, since they are a not-for-profit, who are their top ten contributors that provide revenue for the organization? Outside of what they sell to the district, where is the money coming from that funds this organization? Okay? And if there's nothing?
Quick Google search just shows that Bill Gates is the top funder.
Okay. Um, I just, I saw a hundred and thirty million came in through some foundation, so it just, it begs a question. And it, it may go to concerns that individuals have on both sides of the controversy.
And just so I understand, because I think you, you mentioned as a tack point, Great Minds is already the parent company that supplies G Ods, which we're already using, correct? Just so it's clear. Thanks.
Any additional questions from the board?
Nope. Do we have, um, the liberty to, I saw, at least in reviewing some of this, um, I want to say maybe in Tennessee, a rather large school district, issued a hundred and thirteen-page report on this in response to, uh, issues raised by the community, uh, and ultimately adjusted, uh, some of the, uh, books. Uh, I think one book was removed and then a couple other, I think some of the teaching issues around some of the others was, was adjusted for that particular, uh, school district and, uh, how they wanted to have it taught and reviewed. Is that, uh, obviously it's our, we can do whatever we want, right?
Well, we could, but I would also say that there will be, I mean, Tennesse, I think I sent out some of the information on, on that exact controversy. And Tennessee did an exhaustive, uh, approach to it, and they said, yes, this book could be problematic and how, but the, the issue is, you know, we will be in our current program right now. People, if they wanted to look at it, would find all kinds of things that they may feel is this is correct, this is incorrect, and we're not the ones generating it. But to the extent that we're inservicing our teachers on how to teach this program. And the other thing is that the topics that come up in this are in alignment so that as they move through these various, each, each year, there are four different modules. And the modules connect to social studies and science curriculum strands. And so for us to say, well, this book that people will be inserviced on and learn to teach and have all kinds of resources around to support with the background knowledge is to be pulled out is problematic because it has to be substituted with something that will not have all of those different levels of support and that the other students in the class will not then be, um, accessing. And so for a teacher to teach, uh, Witten Wisdom as it is defined and as they have been trained, and a separate novel or a separate resource at the same time for a single student in a single year will present logistical challenges.
Can I just ask a question too then? So this is a literary curriculum, right? So we're using books, um, from these modules in order to help make, um, our students better readers. And the context of these books will provide greater knowledge that connects into, um, other curriculums, meaning social studies, um, and science primarily, and the arts. The goal is not to actually teach the book with respect to its potential controversy itself. It's to use the text to help make critical reading a skill. Is that correct? And provide context and a connection to what they're learning in other classes.
To build that knowledge and in so doing, teach critical reading skills.
I just want to make sure that gets reiterated because I don't want that to get lost. I mean, I think it's good that we're going to have transparency, given obviously our history here. Um, and I think it's great that you're already thinking about communication with families and making sure they know what books they're going to be, because it, it makes, then you can talk about it at home too, you know? And, and it does provide a gateway for interest, um, and into other books that might be related, like you were getting at, Mr. Dimick. I think that's a great, um, point, you know? It allows the mind to, you just have greater interest if it's not so stuck to like one book for an entire year, for example, or what have you. So, cause I, I know that even the books we have used have prompted additional, um, interest on the part of my readers, for example, in titles by the same author. So I, I think it's, it sounds like a great connection to what's happening in school and other classes too. So.
And the other part about this, this, we will be teaching content through these books. And, and, you know, to one of Mr. Mon's points, this will be this, if this is what the board decides that we are to do, all right? And no matter what program we're looking at, this is among the least controversial of the programs we've looked at. They all are controversial. Many are far more, for instance, EI, learning, imagined learning is far more, um, devoted to say, social justice issues, uh, and the things that would, I think, strike more objections. Um, but this will be the start that guides us. We will focus on this, laser focus on this, and this will consume a lot of our time. And we're not going, just going to keep teaching science the same way we always did with the same number of minutes, and we're not going to teach history the same way we always did with the same number of minutes, because we have to be very good and very focused at what we will be very good at. And there are trade-offs and these will be good trade-offs. And, and these modules are designed to hit content requirements and that we will, having gone through Witten Wisdom, have really good social scientists and really good scientists as they're coming out because of the literacy program and the focus on background knowledge. And they will have approached these topics and materials in a way that they never would have in a core strict science class or a core strict social studies class where they read it, get the bold items and answer the questions in the chat, which I don't mean to diminish, that's not what our teachers are doing, but in the traditional sense. So this is very much a science curriculum and a history curriculum as much as it is a reading program, because those build a synergy for our students.
Could I ask a quick follow-up question with that, Dr. Mann? Would, um, do I understand you then to say that this curriculum will be, there will be, just from a classroom management of the day, minutes of instruction? There will be more minutes in this medium in an ELA because this format provides science and social studies background knowledge, so therefore you will not have to cover that in, in additional minutes later. So for instance, if you had a twenty-minute social studies lesson planned that day and you have ELA, perhaps you'll have a ten-minute social studies focus that day, but you'll dedicate those extra minutes because the content is embedded. Do I understand? Okay. I, I see nodding heads, I understand that correctly.
That's exactly right.
And I'm assuming that's going to work really well, especially so K through three, you have the same teacher, four through six, you have teams, and so it actually works really well because of the way it's split, right?
Yeah. And it, it's also just a reinforcement of all educational research and study that shows if you teach one topic and you address all the different things, like if you, it, it's much more efficient for a kid's mind to focus on one topic of the day and address all the different skills of that. Like if we're learning about baseball, let's do math on stats and baseball. It just enriches the entire experience of learning more about baseball, learning more about math and statistics and learning more about, you know, the player's stories and reading their backgrounds and how they came to the game. Like that, that's wonderful. Thanks for explaining that so we could understand that a little better.
Just one quick example, if I could. Oceanography is one of the early topics that's used under the sea, right? And in that module, they'll have a video clip, remember Jacques Cousteau? Some of us may remember, right? Under the Sea? Well, this is his son, right? And they have a video out there, they have a book, all right, that talks about the sea. They have this tremendous, um, they have some poetry related to it, and then the kids, they talk about how, how creatures at the very bottom of the ocean, it, it get nutrients and, oh, it's awful, right? How they do, but the kids just, and because there's all of these resources that have been organized around, when the kids walk out, right? Because they've had all of these various high-quality resources around this particular topic, they love it, they're engaged with it, and they are so much more aware of what it is to be in the ocean and the food chain and all that stuff than they would ever been if it was just organized in, you know, a chapter of a science book. And that's the power of this, uh, particular program. I will tell you, having gone through this process twice in a different place, right? By chance, by chance, the previous process unrelated to here identified the same two finalists and came to the same conclusion, which was unknown to the people here. Um, so this, this, when this, I was so relieved when this was the outcome because it, it was something that I had observed great people do before. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm sensitive to the concerns, uh, the political concerns, the religious concerns, the, the trust concerns in the community. But, but this is something we can do and this is something that will be good for all of our kids.
So, did you need to show the timeline or we can just look at it for reference and we'll put it up on the website for people?
Yes, yes, Mrs. Reinhart.
I know in the past, we've talked about, um, an educational committee. And perhaps instead of operating as a committee as a whole around evaluating, um, how this moves forward, um, with regard to outcomes and milestones over the next maybe three years, it might be helpful to have a small committee of those who are interested in working with the district leadership in education around this project to look at those outcomes and address some of those, uh, concerns that might come up from both sides of the political aisle. And I know, um, Mr. Demick, um, and I believe, um, Dr. Wayak, and I think Priya, Dr. Serene, and Nicole King might be interested in helping with that. So I would like to just put that out there as something that we, I think as a board, we should consider in terms of committee around this project specifically. So if you're interested in doing that, I don't know that we want to vet that tonight, but if you're interested, please let me know, shoot me an email and we can talk about it further.
Uh, MJ, as someone who holds a teacher certification in Pennsylvania, I'd also be interested in that committee?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you real well.
Uh, as someone, I won't yell into the mic, that's ridiculous. Can somebody tell her what I said? Sorry.
MJ, Emily holds a teacher certificate. She'd also be interested, so I think what might be?
We're not going to vet this tonight.
Right.
We're not going to do this tonight. But if you're interested in serving on a committee to kind of look at and work for. But if you're interested in serving on a committee to kind of look at and work with the district leadership education experts on this over the next three years. Because I don't think we're going to operate as a committee as a whole to do this tonight. Can you just shoot me an email to tell me you're interested and we'll form a committee that includes a bipartisan representation?
But we're all Republican.
Okay.
Are we going to pull that off? I would just.
You know, I put joking aside, I really think it's important that we all have some contribution here. Because I think we all have some history, some experience. It's very hard to make a decision as a board around these kinds of very heavy topics with very little information. And, and the presentation was awesome, it was really excellent. I don't disagree with moving forward the curriculum, but I think it is important to have a place where folks can go and we can talk about this without doing it as a committee as a whole. So again, shoot me an email if you're interested in, in serving on a committee and we'll try to work that out.
I do have a point about that. These people made a fabulous presentation tonight. And we tasked them with doing something and they did it. And they presented it and they told us where we could go for more information. And they told us that we can reach out and ask questions and do all of that. I'm all for an education committee because we have talked about that before. But a committee to micromanage this particular initiative when it's been so well thought out and so well researched and everything is there for us to look at. And if you don't like it, then we come here and that's what nights like this are for discussing. Is if there's something about it that you don't like, or if you want to talk about it with your peers, that's what this, this meeting right now, that's, that's what this is for. So I, I hesitate to focus on a committee to deal directly with this simply because I feel like that's just saying that we are going to micromanage the situation. I don't, I don't think we should be doing that.
And while I. And just, just let me say a couple of words because I think we need to end this particular discussion. I, I think the idea of an education committee makes sense. We can work through the details. I did not hear that it's specifically to manage this, although a component of that that's extremely important with this or any education program that's going to be meaningful for the students to go through, we're going to deal with controversial issues. There needs to be a communication plan of which the board should be as much a part of developing that communication. And I think having a small representation of the board to work through that with different points of view, not bipartisan, but different points of view would be very valuable and would help the staff do what needs to be done with our help. So I think that makes sense. And I think we can move on and we'll deliberate that. But if you have interest in participating in that committee, email MJ and those discussions can take place. Fair enough?
And, and our hope is in January 23rd to bring this to the board for its consideration and a vote. And again, whatever the board decides to do, but if we're to do implementation this year with as far as doing professional development, arranging and scheduling, you know, we're, we're pretty close to a time where it would be convenient if we could get it at the end of the month. But if not, that's, you know, we want to be responsive to whatever concerns the board happens to have. And, and perhaps if in between now and then, people want to come in and talk and review materials a, as individuals. You know, if we can't pull the committee together, we will, we will joyfully, yes, yes.
I was not suggesting in any way, shape or form that we not vote at the end of January about this curriculum. It simply led to a discussion or an idea that forming an education committee may support the staff with the community and the parents in terms of communication. I wasn't looking to have a committee vet this over again. I think we've done that already.
Sure, and we welcome.
Be clear with everybody.
Yeah, and we, we welcome this. And, and again, anyone who wants to come in to talk about, and we'll send out information or just zip us some emails and we'll try to put this together. Because this is big. This is a, this is a decade direction that we're undertaking now. And we must get this right. And I, I think we have, but we must, and we must be able to convince our, our board that this is the right direction to, so. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. So I have next the proposed changes to the Southernly High School Program of Study. Is that correct?
Yes, that's our next, then that. That has been distributed to the board. There's no formal presentation other than if there are questions, we could certainly entertain them tonight. Or we could be ready for them at the end of the month. Or if, anytime between now and then, if something comes up, if there's a review, we're very happy to be responsive to it. But we just wanted to kind of put that out there that it's something that will be upcoming.
There, so there will be a presentation about that. That's not just for us to read and ask, ask questions, we'll get an actual presentation for it.
We, we weren't really planning on a presentation. We, we certainly could, but we have one, the, the, there's not been much change since last year. We, we put out a, a sheet of edits and changes that summarizes what is different between this year and last year.
MJ, can you mute, please?
Dr. Mann, can you mind just clarifying? Are, are our students at the high school, are they, do they receive a ranking for their college applications?
No, a numerical rank, I do not believe they do, but.
Do, do we name a valedictorian?
We do, we don't? Didn't we have valedictorians last year at graduation?
Speakers.
Speakers, yeah.
No.
We, we haven't for some time because of past decisions by the board.
Did you know when that changed, Bill?
Years and years ago, like five years ago?
I want to say five to six years ago. Yeah, he was very passionate about that, yes.
The process for those speakers, which might make folks think we have a valedictorian and a salutatorian, the process for identifying those speakers is actually wonderful and something that's seen a lot of interest in collaboration over the years.
I guess I wanted our superintendent's opinion on, is that something that, is that a direction that it seems like a lot of schools are going away from providing a, a ranking for students or a valedictorian? Is that something that?
No, I would, I would, I would like to get back to you and look at it a little more specifically. I, I think I've read maybe in passing that some places are going away from that type of speech. But how prevalent is, I, I don't know.
I, I've had community members ask me, part of the reason why I bring it up, that, you know, that it, it may serve as a disadvantage to some of our, our kids and, you know, getting into some very competitive programs in colleges.
Why, why don't I find out what it is we're doing?
Yeah, that'd be great.
We'll get it out to everybody and then we can sort of.
Thank you.
I had, I had two questions. I just, in the interest of, I know this is a document that has to be approved so that our kids, our students can select their courses. So I just had two quick questions about the document that I wouldn't want to spring on the night of a vote. So it would require a change, et cetera, et cetera. Because I think that the intention is to vote on the program of studies at the next meeting. Is that correct? So I would just like to ask two questions. I know you're trying to work, it's a long night, but I'd like to ask two questions in that interest. One is previously discussed when we were talking about all the opportunities that are available to our high school students now through Mansfield University. Dual, not dual enrollment, but concurrent enrollment and exploration of work-study programs and all, enriching our students' lives outside the classroom. All of those availability and also speaking to what Dr. Wayak brought up in making our students competitive in accelerated programs, no matter what direction they choose to go. Should it be trades or should it be Ivy League school college experience? We had discussed, there is one item in the course of studies that says if you choose to pursue and if your summer acceleration, taking a summer course online or a summer course over the summer, if a student is approved to do that at the high school, you may not have a study hall the next year. So, and I, we had talked about previously about looking to change this in the course of studies and why it was there and the advantages and disadvantages. I would ask that in order for a student to pursue athletics and as rigorous a course load as that student is encouraged to do at the high school, that we would also provide them the opportunity for kind of that work-life balance, as it were, and also allow them to take a study hall that year so that they could schedule seven credits of a really, we talked about in wit and wisdom here, we talked about depth, not breadth. Let's give them the opportunity to take a, a deep dive into whatever interests them, be it curricular, academic, Ivy League or trades and other work opportunities, but give them the ability to balance. I think it would also help students and teachers schedule for kids who need to make up tests or for kids who are slightly, with our block scheduling, if you're a little bit different, block scheduling works. So that if 50% of the kids are taking these seven courses, we're going to make it work. But if you're a little bit different and we're trying to address, you know, including kids of all different learning styles and backgrounds. If you're a little bit different, it might be hard to work in the course you need. Or maybe you can't get all the courses you would want or need and a study hall would help you pursue that online through a Mansfield opportunity, for instance. I would, I would really ask, I've been asking for years, I would ask again this year, if we could eliminate that, especially with all of the opportunities. And if we could allow students with approval for that summer course, you're still going to have to get approved to do it, to also be able to take a study hall so that you can have that work-life balance and time to pursue all those. That's, that would be my only suggestion. And if not, if somebody could just explain to us, we might not like the answer, but could you help us understand why it has to be that way? That was my one question. And my other question was related to an explanation of the keystones. There is, and, and as of this year, this, they keep bumping it, but as of the class 2023, you have to take three keystones to graduate. And there are alternate pathways for students who perform well in tasks in life, but maybe just aren't the greatest of test takers. There are many alternate pathways. I would just ask if we look at that section of the course of study because it is, I have a senior graduating this year successfully, he made, but I have, I still can't quite figure out what those pathways are. And if we could just work on looking at what paths the keystones mean, what proficient means, what advanced means. And whether or not those scores, currently those scores are placed, it's my understanding, on our graduating seniors transcripts. Dr. Wayak, to your point, to make kids competitive, if you are an AB student and you are pursuing whatever you're pursuing later on in life, and it is printed on your transcript that you got below basic in all three keystones, it just doesn't do our students a great deal of service. So I would ask if we are going to continue to print that on our transcripts. One, can we consider removing it? That's number one, and I think other schools don't have it on there. And if we do continue to have it, why? Two, if we are going to put it on there, could we make it at least stated in the course study? Like we state how courses you withdraw from will be recorded on your transcript? Could we at least explain, you know, throughout the course of study, explain how things are put in your transcript and why? This is not explained. And could we please explain that, at least notify students so that if they're going to take that, and if they know they are poor test takers and it's going to be on their transcript, let's at least make those different pathways obvious. Because there are a lot of schools these days who don't require SAT, ACT standardized tests. They acknowledge that some kids just aren't great at them. So those would be my two, I have a whole list, but those are my two passion projects that I would really hope that I think help advance kids of all different backgrounds and set them up to just present them to the community the way we see them as being great students who are prepared well. I, I have a lot of others, but I will, those are my two big ones. Thanks.
Any additional comments, questions on the high school program changes? If not, just go ahead and review those in depth and maybe send questions on if you have them or suggestions on. Okay, very good. Mr. Pigeon?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have 13 policies on the agenda tonight. So just as a reminder, we're going to be talking through the policies as much as you want or as little as you want. And we'll be voting on those at the next meeting on the 23rd. So there are the legend for the policies where I sent you earlier, or in the middle of last week. If it's bold lettering, it was additional language from PSBA. If it was red lettering, it was language that our solicitor had asked to put in. If it was struck through, those are recommendations from the administrative team. And so those are the three big caveats. Of, of those 13 policies, there are currently five that are current policies with some changes. There are four new policies. There's one new policy that the administrative team is asking to not be voted on or not be accepted. And then there are three policies that are asked to be retired from the policy book. So that being said, and I don't want to belabor points, but does anybody have any specific questions? Or would you like me to go through each individual policy?
I had, it's Emily again, I had one specific question, but only one. And I didn't raise it earlier when you sent that because it kind of relates to the board. My question is on policy 006, page two of that policy. It, they're under order of business. It stipulates the order of business for regular meetings and special meetings on the agenda shall be as follows. And then it has a list. I won't read the whole list, but my question relates to, one of the items is, I will read the list, it relates to it, sorry. Opening procedures, minutes, presentations, student-staff activity presentations, other presentations. And then public commentary, which here is visitor comment. But it says public commentary agenda items only. And then later on in the agenda that we're used to, it says before adjournment, public comment open, meaning items that aren't on the agenda. My question is, is this to, is this, is suggested as a policy change at the board? Is, I hadn't heard discussion on this, but are we changing the way in which we conduct visitor comment? Would this put that into effect? It appears to me as if it does, that we would now be asking the community to be commenting only on agenda items during the first public comment period and all other business during the second. My question was, I think that contradicts policy somewhere else in here. And do we have to put a note or was that the intent or do we need to adjust in some way?
I'll try, the first, this will replace any policy that comes before, because I know this was a big discussion here.
Right, I mean, I meant there's a further policy that further stipulates visitor comment, et cetera, et cetera, somewhere in not the zero series.
And all that, I mean, all the policies will end up being consistent because they're coming and they're regenerating. So this, I mean, obviously this is a topic the board could take up however it wishes to do so. The idea, I think, that PSBA is putting forth is, and this is kind of the compromise. People can come to a board meeting and speak about anything they want. All right, but the, the issue is maybe people want to come to the board meeting and get home, you know, after seeing the actual business of the board, the action of the board. And maybe this compromise is that in the, in upfront, if you have something on the agenda that you wish to speak to board, don't do this or do that. I support this, I don't, then that could be done upfront. Then the meeting can go in an expeditious way. And then if there are many number of people who want to speak about things that are related to the district, but not on the agenda, they can come in and have at it. And those who prefer to leave will be able to see the board, take action on those issues. And then, you know, get out of here at, at a reasonable time. Again, that's just the thought behind it.
Oh, yeah, and, and I know many other boards choose to do it this way. I know that in the past, there's a discussion of folks who want to come and speak to the board and then go the opposite. There are pluses and minuses to each. My, my question was just, is this a change in that philosophy? Or is that, do we as a board intend to carry this through when we get to that other policy? Because if, if we don't, we might as well talk about it now in this policy or suspend both. That was my.
Yeah, and this will be consistent with.
Just a, I, I think you may be asking this because of the past board. We deliberated on this, PCBA had provided that guidance back during the pandemic. And as a board at that time, different composition, we elected not to move forward with that and continue with it was generally open. So I think the, the question that I have is, was this directly taken from PSBA guidance? And not from our historic policy? And is that why it's being presented this way? And if that is a yes, then I think the question to the board, do we simply want to maintain how we've done it historically? Which is visitor comment, you may comment on anything you wish. It doesn't have to be what's on the agenda. And if that is indeed the desire of the board, then we make the policy say what it should to reflect that. So.
Right, this is just a recommendation from PSBA.
Okay.
The board can.
So my, my question to the board, we don't have to deliberate it. I think we all know the positives and the negatives to both. Do you want to maintain as we have historically and leave it open? Both sections of visitor comment, pre and post, to open dialogue?
If I can, before the board weighs in on that, what's listed here in this agenda is from our current policy.
That, well, there was some debate about that because one, one provision said yes. The other actual policy that overrode that sub-policy.
Bingo.
Said no.
Right, yes. 006, this is exact language from 006. And, and as I recall, that was a ship Dr. Musoline could not get to shore.
Correct.
It is effort, yes.
Yes.
About 200 yards out.
Yes.
So you can, again, you can revisit that, you can leave it as is, you can do whatever you want.
And I know Mr. Demick has brought this up since the new board has taken its seats because it has come up at least once before. So I, I just wanted to make sure, I, I see he's grabbing his mic button, I'll let him talk on the topic. That was my only question.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think I generally had a pretty strong view of this.
Yeah, I think I generally had a pretty strong view of this, as others might as well. I think it should just say public commentary in those two sections and should not be followed by a colon, that in the second one says open and the first one says agenda items only. It was my recollection that generally, that's where the board, and I know there is conflicting policy.
No, Jeff, I agree with you.
That's what we thought, and I think that's the right approach. At the end of the day, people should be able to come to a board meeting and talk about more or less whatever they want at the first or the second opportunity. And if we got to sit through it, that's what we don't get paid to do.
I agree with you for the reason, Jeff. I know other boards do it in this manner, where agenda items first and then open items. I agree with you, but I also agree with you that here it's suddenly higher experience when we have toyed with that. What hasn't, I think will inevitably happen, is a bunch of folks, something happens in the two days preceding, and folks are rightfully concerned and want to talk about it, and have them come here to a mic to express their views and then tell them to wait till the end of the meeting does not, it's just not good public community practice and for the health of the community. And so I think in those instances, we would probably as a board end up waiving this rule, which then is also not fair to those individuals who maybe have the same situation where they just need to get home to put their kids to bed, or they need to get to the basketball game or something like that. So for, just to add that, I would agree with you for a different reason. I just think we're going to do it that way anyway as a board and a community. So I think we, our policy should reflect the way we conduct ourselves in the room, so.
So is there anyone against going with our historic policy of just open comment?
Yes, go ahead.
But, but we have you next to the mic.
You know, there's a policy in here that covers electronic calling in. It says, it says if we can't hear you.
Are you on mute, Mrs. Reinards? We cannot hear you.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Now we can, yes.
Okay. I think the practice has been over the past two years from the public, that those folks from the community speaking before the meeting have stuck to the agenda items that have been publicly listed. I don't know why that's funny. I think that it is best practice in board meetings for the agenda to be posted publicly and for those comments before the meeting to be related to the agenda. New ideas, new comments, stuff unrelated to the agenda comes after the meeting. That is best practice in most board meetings across the country. And I don't know why we would deviate from that, because that has been our practice, and that's what's been happening for the last few years. That's my opinion.
In application, it's, it's not been the practice. There's been some perception that it was, but in actuality, it's not been the practice for the two years and going back a decade now.
I guess we're not so.
And the majority of the board here in attendance are all in favor of keeping it as it has been where it's open comment.
So then I will be the sole person who disagrees.
Noted.
Well, I don't know if I completely disagree with Ms. Reinards. When are, when is new business introduced in a board meeting?
Towards the end.
Right. And if you have a specific agenda in place where you're planning to dive right into details, it may make sense to have the public that is interested in those particular topics to give their input and strike while the iron's hot, if you will, and leave it to that so that the board can get to its business and then have the ancillary items.
Yeah. It's funny, because I had a similar opinion when we had this discussion before, and we did receive a lot of community input at that time before a different board that indicated that perhaps we were removing the ability of those community members to speak freely and somehow stripping them of their freedom. So for that reason, I would certainly not want to stand in the way of that again. Well, I do agree. I mean, I think it makes more sense because that's, but at the same time, it, it's just, it hasn't worked.
And who's going to police it?
Yes.
Because, I mean, we've had instances where community members have stood up and talked about signs or transgender bathrooms and things like that. None of those things were ever on the agendas, but I didn't hear or even hear the mention of that needs to wait until the end of the meeting. And I don't think that any one of us would feel overly comfortable stopping somebody when they've started speaking and saying, oh, I'm sorry, that doesn't have to do with an agenda item. You're going to have to sit down.
Okay. If I could offer one thought, maybe a complicating one, but many districts that do not limit comment to the agenda items, and there are many that do that, all right, will, and that have a work session, will offer a public comment at the start of the work session and a public comment at the end of the work session, and they will offer a public comment at the start of the voting meeting, but will not have a public comment at the end of the voting meeting. And the idea is that everyone can say what it is they say. They have two opportunities in the work session, but once votes start to take place and decisions start to be made, there is sometimes value in saying, we're not going to relitigate decisions. There's an opportunity for people to maybe to cool down if they're upset, and they could come back and have two discussions at the next work session. They will have had the opportunity to speak prior to the vote. So many districts that do not limit to agenda items will have two public opportunities at the work session and only one at the voting session. Perhaps that's something to be considered and perhaps not.
Now, the other option too is when you have the agenda sign and you put the subject manner at which you're bound to speak and speak toward that, so that at least in the beginning, you see whether or not the person is speaking on an agenda item or not.
Again, then you still have to police it because they could sign up to say, I want to talk about the stadium. And then once they get up there, say, hey, I was really glad to see that you put shovels in the dirt. Now let me talk to you about this. Okay. Like, who's going to police it? Like, I think there's too much policing that needs to be done to.
You could police it.
I will gladly, but I don't think anybody's going to want that to say.
Okay. So make the appropriate changes. We can have further dialogue. Is what Dr. May suggested as far as two for a workshop, pre and post, no post discussion for a voting meeting. Any interest in that? Or again, leave it as it's been traditionally with public comment, pre and post meeting, as it's been open?
This is Emily speaking. I'm not interested in something that would reduce the total number of opportunities for the public to speak from four opportunities per month to three opportunities per month. That's, that's my take on that suggestion. Although, I mean, I think it would be also a different story if, for instance, we allowed visitor comment during all the committee meetings that we perhaps, you know, will be instituting. That could change my opinion, but as it is at this time, taking community opportunity to tell the board its perspective from three to four is not.
Did you want to say something? If not, could.
I actually did. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think what Dr. May had suggested in terms of a strategy is a very good compromise, so that folks pre and post meeting in a workshop can provide whatever commentary they want. But when we get to a voting meeting, prior to the meeting, it's related to the agenda, post meeting can be new stuff. I think it's a great compromise for efficiency and communication. And I think that's actually how we've been operating for the past year.
I think that takes, yeah, I mean, I agree with Ms. Gaiman that, I just, I mean, look, during the pandemic, that was, that was a one-off. I mean, we had a lot of commentary and, you know, and, you know, it is what it is, rightfully so. But the reality is, I mean, I've been on it for a long, long time, and people generally don't even say a word. So, you know, if in the course of a meeting, somebody comes up with an idea that they want to say something, I think, I think two opportunities to talk whatever you want to talk about. It's been my long experience, I think, most, I mean, I'm not the only one that's been here a long time at this point. That just, generally, that's not a problem. And I do think it's a little bit of a, you know, if you have a voting meeting and then you take a vote and you tick somebody off, they ought to be able to get up and tell you, they ticked me off. I don't agree with that, you know? And then to say, well, after we took the vote, we did what we did, now you all can just eat it and shut up, you know?
Plus, it's confusing now, right? Like, which one's the workshop and which one's the meeting? Because, you know, we are sometimes voting on things because we need to during workshops, and I think it's hard for the community to keep track, even though it's listed, I know, on the, on the website. I think trying to remember which ones you could talk at the beginning in case you can't make.
That's fine. Listen, I'm not advocating.
No, I think it was a good idea, but just the discussion. I think if you keep it simple and just keep it as it is now, I agree, it's been fine.
I'll just say that, you know, really, the only reason I think of having the agenda item stuck to the first session is that you want to keep the meeting focused on the agenda and not have shiny objects in the corner that divert everything. So that was my reasoning behind, you know, having the stipulation on the first one. And no, you're not going to be shutting somebody up if they don't follow the session, but it'd be a common courtesy and implore the individuals to do that.
What we have done in the past is to organize, we, I think we still retain the right as a board or board president prerogative to arrange those comments. So if you see 10 people have signed in, and you could take those individuals who are commenting on agenda items immediately before the rest of the meeting starts, so that if you have folks who want to comment on items, that it's still a prerogative of the board to take, you know, to segment topically. And that could be, you know, something that we can, to keep the focus on. You hear the comment and then you take action, like Mr. Mon was saying.
I, do we actually capture what they want to speak about? Anne?
Yes.
Okay. But they, do they have to answer, though? I guess is my question.
It is in another policy we're looking at tonight, it says you have to list the topic upon which they are speaking. See, Mr. Pigeon's eye, because he's like, Emily read my attachments. Oh, yeah. So you have to list the, and so you have to collect.
I understand that, but historically, they've not.
No, we historically collect the topic they speak on every time.
What is the topic or speaking time?
Correct.
Not necessarily do folks.
Right.
It is.
Yeah. It's like many policies, the actual application and following is not always 100%. So, and we can't force or compel someone to answer that, you know, there's, they don't have to.
So while it doesn't appear to be unanimous, it seems that we want four opportunities, you know, with no restriction. So let's just do that and come back and at the end of January, and we could, if there's any additional insight, we'll take care of it then.
Good. I'll have it corrected and.
Okay. Anything on any of the other policies for discussion, comment, change? Going once, twice? I hear no, so let's move on to something much more fun. Graduation plans for the class of 2023.
Yes. We just wanted to let everyone know that graduation is scheduled for June 2nd at Lehigh Stabler Arena. And right now, if snows, if we don't get any heavy snow, that should be just fine. We won't do any makeups. But we wanted to, the board will be voting on a contract with the Stabler Arena coming up at the end of the month, but I just wanted to let everyone know that is the plan, and it's largely driven by when the arena is available. And our hope is that perhaps this is the last year that we are looking at the Stabler Arena for this venue.
And I'm not going to be here when you're discussing this next year, so I am so pleased to hear what you just said, and that there's a high likelihood that it could be in our own brand-new stadium, which would be lovely.
That's our hope.
Because one of the.
The board's hope, that's certainly administration's.
That would be great. People would be able to commute here and not fight the traffic to Stabler. Any visitor comments?
Can you hear me? My topic is various. I always write various because I usually talk about a bunch of things. First of all, supporting STEM. Robotics kicked off last week. Their assignment this year is to build a robot that stacks cubes and cones. My father-in-law worked at Bell Labs, and he is so impressed with the opportunities that this district provides at early ages. The ask is Easter weekend Stabler, that's their playoff competition, and it's in our backyard. So the, the teacher is asking for people to show support by showing up. Supporting the arts, the musical, rock of ages. The kids are excited. They're going to have an American Idol finalist visit one of the practice dates. Anyone can volunteer to help, not just parents of students in the, in the show. So when you see ads coming out for programs, opportunities for financial donations, right now, they're looking for a skilled artist to paint some of the scenery. If you know anybody with light and sound equipment, they're like 10 body mics. They're experiencing some costs that they usually don't have when you had an experienced director. This is a new director, so they're looking for things like that. So if you know somebody, talk to Mrs. Gaiman, Mrs. Gangware, myself. Mr. Ben is the director. Supporting public schools, I'm hoping that our district gets some money coming in. Congress approved increased funding for education, about 5%. The biggest federal education spending is for Title I. That increased by 850 million. Second biggest is special ed, 934 million increase. There's also money for teacher prep, professional development, head start, recruiting school leaders, community schools, and even a 10% bump in research and development. So I'm excited about those things. As far as the ed committee, great idea. I'm hoping that you just don't talk about the politics of the program, that you talk about the academic benefit of the programs. The ELA student conferences, I saw, I used to do that with even as young as first grade. It's not just something you do, though. It's a lot of professional development for the teachers on how to do it right. And as far as the no step for credit, no credit steps for teachers incoming, I saw that Parkland does, it's negotiable. It's, they don't just have a blanket, no experience credit. So like you said, there's a cost to saying that we're not going to give, experienced teachers coming in are going to be getting paid the same as somebody coming out of college. Sometimes it depends on the position. That's Parkland's position. Also, I came across this book. It's on Apple, The Boy, the Mole, the Fox, and the Horse. Great book. I would love for every team in our district to have this. It's on Apple right now, 30-minute cartoon. What do you want to be when you grow up? Kind. What is the bravest thing you ever said? Help. Looking for help isn't giving up, it's refusing to give up. I would, fantastic book for SEL. If even every team.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I was aggressive, Bill.
So even if every team in our district got a copy of this, it was $12 on Amazon, I'd highly recommend it. Fantastic cartoon, too.
Thank you.
Let's not do that.
That's it? All right. Thank you for that, and thank you for keeping us awake. My watch has said I need to get up and move, so I think it's now time.
Public comment restriction.
All right. Unless anybody objects, I think it's time for adjournment.
Thank you. Thank you.